Yeah.
Yeah, you waiting for the rain?
Mm-hmm.
You'll get it.
I thought you was waiting for the rain.
Wait, I'm gonna get the rain first.
There you go, there you go.
Yeah.
Like how it's going frosts free?
They're saying Thursday morning get closed, but if it's clear, maybe if it's cloudy.
Nah.
And if the wind's blowing.
That's true.
We've been running to election boxes all morning.
I bet you.
Printer's not working, or forgot this, didn't put that, they need more ballots.
Be great.
I got it straight up.
Yeah, what about?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather here today to, Commissioners, to make decisions on the county's business, Lord, and we just ask you that you just continue to bring in this rain. It's looking nice and cool outside, and we appreciate it. And Lord, just be with all the people in the world that need your love and your guidance. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, on the Texas flag, the flag of allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Good help?
You got it? Maybe we should figure out how to put it up on the screen.
We can probably do that. Okay, this time this person who visited before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes.
I've got, do I have to stand up?
No, sir.
Everybody's here.
No, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Wayne.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Sure.
Uh, I did, I hope all of you know that I've always been a very strong supporter of Curry County and Snyder Tech. I've been here for fifty-plus years, and this is my home, and I love it to death. Uh, the citizens of this great county elected each of you to be great stewards of our money, no doubt about that. Uh, and those funds come from us taxpayers and other sources as well, and we appreciate that help, too. Uh, I understand the proposed budget for twenty twenty-one is about twenty-something million dollars, which we expect you to spend wisely, and I know you will. Uh, the amount received in American Rescue Plan this year is about three-point-four million dollars. I don't, have you received all that yet?
No, sir.
Just half of it?
Just half.
Okay. Um, the hospital district asked for a portion of that money to help them get the nursing staff and other expenses they need to operate well. Uh, I read in the paper, and this is what kinda disturbed me a little bit, you're thinking about asking the West Texas, West Central Texas Council of Governments to assist you in how to spend that money. Uh, is that correct?
We'll get into all of that later.
Okay, alright, and earlier you appointed a board to look at that, or committee as well. Uh, but you might get into that, to ask them how to spend that three-point-four million dollars. Uh, I don't know if there's a fee for that assistance or not. Uh, my question is this, are you going to ask them to also assist you in spending the twenty-plus million dollars in Curry County? Uh, if not, does, something's wrong here. I mean, you can't spend three-point-four million dollars wisely, and, but you can spend, uh, the twenty-two million or whatever it is. Uh, it doesn't add up to me. Uh, I'd ask you to stand up and, and do the right thing for our hospital. Uh, it's not the, the administration needs help necessarily, it's the staff, and they're short out there. I've been out there, I know. I was out there the other day with my wife, and, uh, and, and they're having trouble keeping staff. So, I'd ask you to reconsider that.
Alright, thank you, Eddie. And we will get into all of that later. Anybody else? Okay. Uh, Court to discuss and consider inter附ting project schedule and staffing. Anything?
Bill, your road's open.
I, you know, like most government projects, it was delayed and after the deadline I was given, I'm sure. Well, it wasn't open yesterday afternoon.
We opened it this morning.
Okay. Was it under budget?
Huh?
Under budget?
I doubt it. I doubt it.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Good deal. Nothing else?
Nope.
I'm just whipping on this call.
That guy's been working on Gary Drew Road, fixing potholes and driving in driveways, not driveways, but entrances to driveways, yeah.
In the right way.
Exactly.
Alright, Court to discuss, considering appoint the medical director of emergency medical services for twenty twenty-three. Want to discuss that at all? It's the same thing that gets banned always in. No? Oh, that's right, twenty-five hundred a month and four hundred dollars per year for professional membership in the National Association of EMS memberships, if he chooses. Wait a minute, the policy shall have a minimum limit of the amount of fifty thousand dollars for liability insurance. Twenty-five hundred dollars.
That didn't change.
That didn't change, twenty-five hundred dollars.
Just got one person.
Okay. What is it going from into? I think it's going twenty to two, twenty-five hundred.
Per, per.
Okay. Thank you. Any thoughts, questions? We have to have a medical.
Yeah, we do.
We do.
We do. You do, just make the motion, like, pointing Dr. David Carey as the medical director of emergency medical services for twenty twenty-two.
I second it.
Allow the judge to sign.
Yep, let you sign it.
I second it. All in favor? You sound great now?
Yes. We're looking at doing a whole lot more.
Court to consider resolution to elect members to the appraisal district board of directors. We should have that resolution. Thank it.
Judge, I appreciate that there are still people that are volunteering here and serve on boards and help us to be a part of the community so that they're getting the job done and doing the best they can. So I'm, I've seen these members and one from my precinct who served even a year, I appreciate him, and all the others. I make a motion that we elect those that have been nominated.
Okay.
All in favor?
Isn't this the one that we have to figure out? We have to give so many votes to all of them, or so many votes to one of them?
We can't, I think the only ones we can give to are the ones that are nominated by us, which is Fred Cross.
Well.
Okay.
Because the other, the other entities, wherever they fall, will do the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay, so all eleven-twenty-five point four, Fred Cross.
Yeah, I think that's really good, Rachel.
Alright, Court to discuss and consider non-health lane policy. This is mandated, if I'm not mistaken.
This is once again another mandated policy. There's some, still some fine tuning on Word that I would like to do, but, uh, that's the rough sketch of what the personnel policy would look like. Essentially, if a certified peace officer requests to have mental health rights, he or she will receive three days of any time to go see. That's pretty much the policy. State, there's parameters as far as the amount of events, but this is mandated by the state legislature that we have to policy for our peace officers.
And I guess you, this is with county attorney, and he feels like everything is the way it should be, and I guess you would get with him to write a, uh, one of the judicial sign, right? So, since it's another unintended mandate that we have no choice but to do.
It's your, it's your favorite down to.
It is.
And this, the three days would be admin days. They don't go against their vacations equally or anything. It's just, we want to take care of our peace officers, I understand, but having another mandated policy telling us how to do it is.
That's the only thing. We won't take care of any one of our employees. There are employees that, I can name one real easy, and in fact, there's one separate there, in the tax office. Those people get cursed at for no reason, and, and they're afraid all the time for those people being angry and saying things they hear. So, I mean, ah, please don't let the legislature hear this. I make a motion that we pass the, uh, with, after the county, modify it the way that he believes it should be legal, and then allow the county judge to sign for us.
So, yeah.
All in favor? Alright, Court to discuss and consider declaring certain personal property owned by Curry County as trash or rubble.
Yes, and so, for years now, we've talked about auctions, and we receive a lot of the equipment from other precincts, well, not precincts, from other, uh, parts of the county, the Parks Department, for instance, uh, from, for equipment that they no longer believe is even useful to them. And these vehicles, there's about five or six of them that are in the eighties, been sitting there for years. Uh, everything on them has dilapidated even further than when we pulled them out there. None of them will run, and I believe that they are considered, or should be considered by our court, to be trash and, uh, to be able to, be able to take it to Snyder Iron Metal, which we have already bid during the February to allow Snyder Iron Metal to take trash and other items that are of no use to the county any longer, and stop having to store them, and are trying to pay to get somebody to take them. And so that's, I'd make a motion that we allow those vehicles that are in that, in my precinct yard that are dilapidated to be able to, to be taken to Snyder Iron Metal. We are taking off any part of the vehicle that is of any value above what it would be if it was left on the vehicle. So we're gonna take the radiators off, which that's what these guys are stealing, and any catalytic converters, they love to steal those. So if anything of real, uh, that will be worth more separately, we're taking those down and, and taking them first to them. We'll get more money for them, and then we'll take the rest of the junk, uh, part of it to them to recycle.
There's gold, catalytic converter.
Is there, is there, is there three, three of them that happen to come out of Jim's yard to talk to?
Catalytic converters? We gotta make money anyway.
Alright, any other discussion? Yeah, motion in a second, all in favor? Alright, Court to discuss and consider the following actions at Curry County Golf Course and Clubhouse, and I'll mention them all, and then we can go through them one by one. Declare contents of clubhouse, trailer house, and area of old equipment on the south end as trash or rubbish. Allow Snyder Iron Metal to set a roll-off to Holloway Metal, and allow Orange Grid to remove all trash or rubbish from the clubhouse. Contract with compliance sampling analysis incorporated, and one priority environmental services to abate asbestos at the clubhouse, and then contract with Snyder Iron Metal to raise the clubhouse. So, um, first thing that's gonna come up is dollars. Where are the dollars coming from? Um, the golf course has done well this year. There is two forty-three, about fifty thousand dollars over the, um, that they have made that is not tax dollars. It would be, um, money that they've made. These are what, um, the two companies, one priority and, um, compliance sampling, they have us two years ago as far as cost to do the abatement on that. Um, it's gotten to the point where we need to something there. Um, the contents are continuing to deteriorate, and there's a trailer house that's out there that is, it would cost more to move it, junk, it's old equipment that's been there for years. Um, I think it came from outside of the barn. So, um, that's, that's the first part. Uh, and then we've spoken with Snyder Iron Metal. Um, they are willing to raise the building, knock it down, we would have to haul it off. They would take all the metal out of it. Everything else we would have to haul off ourselves. Um, and they said about twenty thousand, so total cost to do the abatement and to knock it down and haul off that metal, and they would also haul off the metal from the trailer and that pile out there. Um, of course, we would get credit on all of that, would be up to twenty thousand dollars, is what they said that it would be. So, um, I would think that we have, we would certify the additional funds that Golf Course has made, put that towards, uh, the forty thousand, basically, that it would cost to abate and raise that building.
And Judge, I'm trying to, because he is a very, very busy man with all the different arts that he has, and just wanted to get him to clarify in writing what that cost would be with or without the metal that's contained within that building. And he has, uh, he was out, I called him a couple of times, he's out, and so just as soon as I can get with him, I'll get to clarify.
Right, and we have talked to the Orange Crew, or, I'm not the Orange Crew, we talked aside. Uh, so it's not the Orange Crew. Uh, he, he does, uh, they, they do deal with the Orange Crew, so, um, they are willing and able to do that. I can't tell you how much I appreciate y'all running that program. Um, you're doing a fantastic job, and you can see the differences throughout the community.
I've been a little bit.
Or they're can.
Yeah.
Great.
I was gonna tell you, Judge, uh, last year, we, of course, we calculated, our years are a little different than the county, but last year we did close to four thousand two hundred and sixteen hours of man-hours of community service work in the community, eighty-seven souls, so to speak, and, uh, and we do get cussed out sometimes, but it's for good reason. But I just wanted to let y'all know that, so y'all know kinda, and I think, hopefully everybody sees, uh, exponential benefits in the five-one-seven ratio.
Yeah. They gets out there and works with them.
Yes, I've seen that.
And they'll try anything.
Good, thanks.
It's amazing.
So any thoughts on this?
The, the, the south of the, of the courthouse where the, right by where Sees the Bar, equipment shed is.
Yes, sir.
There's a trailer in the middle of that pile. It doesn't need to go.
Okay.
One of the precincts could use it.
Okay.
But it's right in the middle. If you don't walk out there, you don't see it.
Yeah, I didn't walk out to the middle of it, so I did not see it. Okay.
But, like I said, that's my.
Swear to God, I thought it turned in there.
Yeah, that's my only, don't wanna throw away something that could be used.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, and if there is anything else that is in there that could be used, we would obviously pull it out first.
Yeah, I'll go out there and look.
Okay.
If it was there.
Probably still is.
Yeah, probably more covered up, but, anyway, that's my only issue. Because, get rid of the, we've been wanting to get rid of that clubhouse since I've been on the.
I think we voted it a couple of times.
We did, we did.
We just need to.
But it's, it was always due to the asbestos issue.
And the black mold.
Yep.
And I tell you, I've talked to several different contractors here, from what Snyder Iron Metal said that they would, could do it for, and what they said they could do it for is a world of difference. We're talking two, three times the cost. So he's, he set up to do it, I didn't even realize it. Then, uh, the guy that was demoing all of these, or three mega white units out here at, on Roby Island, he was even cheaper than them by far. And so, I think he's, he started telling me no, and he found out it was a county building. He said, let's go look at it. And so I think he said that again to the judge. He, he's willing to help, so that's pretty amazing.
So roughly forty grand?
Roughly.
Roughly.
Yeah.
And we get credit for the metal?
We do, yes, sir. No tax dollars either?
Yeah.
We just need to certify.
Just need to verify it in, in writing.
Right, so do we need to table it until then, or?
I think if we said, approve up to twenty thousand, we would be okay? If you don't wanna, if that's the amount you wanna go to, if we approve up to a certain amount.
Well, my, my point was, he said he was gonna get the final figures.
Yeah.
Was, that was my only.
So if, if he was, what he told us was eighteen to twenty, and so if we approved to twenty, we will be at, at or above.
Right.
What he intends to do it for.
Okay.
And so, there's, he's, he says there's really not enough metal in there to make a lot of difference in what the, you know, the, the cost would be. So, I think if we do it up to twenty, I think we're fine.
Yeah, okay, yeah, seems me. Because we can get all that cleaned up, and the golf course can have more stuff to mow.
For now, we leave this lamp, it's, it's.
Yeah.
Oh, you mean that other area that?
Yeah, yeah.
Gotcha, yeah.
Yeah. Well, you want a motion to approve up twenty thousand?
Well, a motion would need to be made for all three items, and which one? Are we looking? It would be both, because one is the oversight, and the other is the. The oversight is the, uh, forty-two handle.
So they're just making sure the CSI looks, yeah.
Correct. That, yeah, that, um, one priority better correctly.
Wow. You, you gotta have that now, I mean.
One, two, three.
I'm just glad it was just in one small area, because if there was asbestos throughout that whole thing, uh, twenty thousand would have become.
Yeah.
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 So, I guess we need a motion for each of those, or if you wanna do it as all three, however you wanna handle it, however you think would be best.
Didn't matter to me, because this is, like I said, this is an opportunity to clean it up for way less than we thought. Yeah, that's where else is it anyway?
Our mental services, excuse me, house and contract with Snyder Iron Metal to raise the clubhouse.
Up to?
Up to twenty thousand dollars for Snyder Iron Metal.
Now you just need to declare the stuff that's all rubbish and trash.
Yeah, not the courthouse.
Not all of it.
At the golf course.
Okay, and so when. Declare Adams and clubhouse.
That's a motion we have seconded, all in favor? Doesn't consider contract, contracting, or requesting RFPs to administer or assist in administering ARPA funds. So, this is going to what Eddie was discussing. Um, there's a little bit of confusion on that, okay? It's, uh, not asking them to come in and say, spend the money here, it's the back end of it. So the committee that is out, that we have, is going to make recommendations to Commissioners' Court. Commissioners' Court will say yes or no. Um, if Commissioners' Court says yes to these projects, the auditor's office will administer all of the paperwork and all of that. What, um, the COG or Grantworks or anything, any other company that would do would help in the paperwork end of it, not with giving ideas on where that money should go. So, there's a little confusion there. That's, we're not asking them to tell us where to spend the money.
Okay, well, I, I apologize for that.
No worries, no worries. I can, I can see where you can get confused with that. I can see where, that, that could be confusing, and that, that should have been clarified upfront by me. Um, so that was me causing the confusion, and I apologize for that. Uh, but that's why we did this, so we can clarify. Um, but, um, so I've, I've talked to, um, NACO, um, and they are right in the middle of everything. Um, and I asked them about what they could do, and they said they're limited in helping navigate the treasury rules at a higher level. They can coach you and your team, but they don't have bandwidth to help with the actual implementation, which is fine. Um, so what I asked them was, um, and, and the reason this came up is there are a lot of counties, including some neighboring counties, that have gone with, uh, companies such as Grantworks or with the council of governments to assist with the implementation. Um, so what, uh, NACO said, it depends on the county's game plan for investing the money, um, it's three-point-two million. Does your county plan to invest the money in one or two larger projects that are fairly straightforward forward with compliance? Or does the county to, plan to break up the three-point-two in many, many little buckets of spending that will, will require more auditing and reporting compliance with treasury? The more complicated your investment plan with more moving parts, the more likely the county might need outside help. Um, also, does the county plan on purchasing additional, pursuing additional federal monies beyond the treasury money that would complicate the use of the treasury money for making sure you don't co-mingle funds and comply with non-federal match rules? Um, the treasury has not issued final ruling yet, but they did, um, state that, um, they put out a statement, and. Yes, I brought that. I brought their statement. Um, but in there it says that funds used in a manner consistent with the interim final rule, while the interim final, final rule is in effect, is effective, will not be subject to recruitment. So if we spend it, the interim final rule, we don't have to, which I still like the idea of waiting for the final one. Um, we're not in a hurry, we've got plenty of time. Um, so based on that, I, the committee's not looking at a lot of little individual projects to spend it on throughout. Um, it's, it's more focused areas, I think five or six areas, something like that. Um, and we're gonna meet again today to discuss further. So, um, I don't know, what do y'all think? Do you think it would, also, I found out that Grantworks charged about ten percent of the money? That's a lot of money.
Well, it's two-point-eight.
Two-point-eight, oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Because I asked them.
Oh, did you? Okay. Uh, COG, I got my information from them. Uh, they said they would charge up to five percent, so.
Interesting, Grantwork, Grantworks said two-point-eight percent.
Which is about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
Yeah, and that may not seem like a lot, but it. With that amount of money, that's.
Well, yeah, but my issue with this, with the money as a whole. Is federal government and that's the reason I think we we need one.
Okay.
Because let's just say. Spend the one point two that we have. Down the road, and even though you go buy this. Okay, because if they want it back, they're going to get it back. We ain't got it to pay back. And if you already spent it. That's that's my issue of having so having oversight from somebody that does that to protect taxpayers. Because if we have to pay, and I know ill fans and buds, pay back one point two or three point five. And we don't have it, you know where we get it. But that's my issue. We just, I think we need some outside oversight.
My question for that would be if they run afoul of the rules. Are they going to pay? Are they insured to pay just what you pay them? Or or the full amount that the federal government repays because they made the mistake?
Yeah.
Because they can do, they can make mistakes just like you.
True.
I don't, I don't know about that, but I know whenever Jim and I went to that West Texas Conference in Abbling, Grantworks was there, and they did say they had created a a department just dedicated to this. So, I mean. They don't know what they're doing.
If I may, I have a question. If we spend it according to the ARP guidelines. And the federal government comes back and says, no, you can't do that. What's the difference between us doing that on our own and us doing that with an okay from Grantworks?
That's why I'm saying, are they going to pay it back themselves? Or we we're responsible for it if we do it?
Yeah.
If they're responsible for it for eighty-nine thousand dollars, I'm not against it. If they're responsible, but are they responsible? And I doubt they are.
I doubt they are.
I don't think they are.
No, probably not.
I don't know how interested our Auditor's Office is to, that they have, I mean, ours is obviously always taking care of our grants and doing a very good job.
It's our responsibility.
Definitely is.
I don't know that they actually take over with. I think they guide more than anything.
That's what most of them do is they they guide. They don't, and sometimes they'll do some of the, or I know. Remember, we did Hibbs and Todd with Hermley, and they did some of the paperwork, but it came back to the Auditor's Office.
And I I guarantee you, our Auditor's Office isn't going to to do anything without consultation from these, their groups, NACO.
Somebody.
I mean, NACO is absolutely able. And and whenever this thing is filed, to guide our Auditor's Office to get this done right. I'm not afraid of that.
I'm not afraid of it either. I just.
I just.
I know where the federal government works.
If we take an outside agency to work for it and they they're not responsible. I mean, if you're consultation, NACO's there. I think they're amazing in what they do, and they they they're going to lead a lot of counties throughout this nation in spending, in the administration. Or consultation of the administration of this grant. We've got eighty-nine more thousand dollars we can spend on things that that we're needing in this community. I I trust the Auditor's Office to be be on top of it more than anybody outside of myself.
Well, there's no doubt about that. It's just like I said, it comes back to federal government.
Right.
Yeah.
That's a lot of, a lot of responsibility.
Yeah, it it is.
Because you can make one wrong step.
Right.
Yeah, I had some, I've worked with the federal government a couple of different grants, but the thing that you got to realize is kind of like these people were talking about, how diverse that you're going to spend your money, that's more duties upon your auditor that they are not necessarily prepared to. It's not just to streamline one project. And that, you know, I would think as a. Can do a good job, but at the same point in time, you're asking them to do another job, you know, and. How that affects their employees and the things that they have, I think I'll have to take that into consideration. I would, if I was a department head, say, okay, I'm taking on another two point five million dollars. How am I going to manage this, you know?
I never, she just never has asked. Or if someone, I mean, and she, I think she'd be the first one to say, this is something beyond what I can do. And if it is, well, then we've always allowed that. We never just said do it. In fact, we can't do that. She is kind of on her.
You better believe it.
And so if she says, this is something I don't feel good about and can't do, then she won't do it. But she she has the ability, I believe, to do the job and do it right. And and then if she says she can, well, I just trust that too. Just like we would trust you.
Well, I just wanted, I just consider, you know, just consider that 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 is additional, that is additional work for someone to do. And they and they could, I have no, I have absolute confidence, just like you do. I'm just saying, it's kind of like if I was to say, okay, I need you to go, you know, do two and a half more miles of the road for me, you know, you're going to say, oh, well, okay, that's going to, that's going to be some work. And most people don't realize it. That dollars and tracking will work.
It's not, I don't think anybody's questioning the ability of the Auditor's Office.
I'm not, I'm not saying you are, but.
But but it's just.
I'd just like to have her input.
Oh, sure.
That's what I'm saying.
Sure.
Before we, before we agree to let somebody else.
Well, yeah. What do we?
She knows her limitations.
Table it, you know, we talked to.
I agree, absolutely.
Well, I think it's also important to know what projects we're even looking at.
Right.
I mean, because if we're looking at one project, like NACO says, that's not. So having all the paperwork side, whereas if we're working, looking at twenty projects, that's twenty tracking projects. So I think it also depends a lot on what projects we do.
Did she, did she not send out an email suggesting that we might need to get somebody outside?
She may have.
I believe she did.
And so, yeah, if she feels that.
Misty.
I have no.
I believe she did, but I can't speak.
I'm I'm pretty sure she did.
I remember seeing that you told that you've been speaking to her.
Yeah.
And so. Just like we're talking here, she doesn't know the complexity of it until the committee says to her, these are the projects that we're going to do. If it's not a lot of projects, it's going to make it a lot simpler. If it's a lot of projects, it could be. She may have sent out an email and felt that way at the beginning. Who wouldn't? But she may not feel that way today. And so I think she really needs to get with the committee at their meeting and let them explain to her what their ideology is about the projects they're going to do and see how she feels. And like I said, if she feels like she can't help, I wouldn't want to ask her to do it.
Right.
But she's never backed down from any other grants that we've ever done. This is more complex. I believe that.
It's got more strings attached than most grants. Most grants.
She's on the board, isn't she? Oh, she resigned?
But. That's that's my.
She's going to be in the thick of it either way you go. But if she goes to consultation, she doesn't feel like NACO is capable to do that, then.
I'm not sure that it's not the added work.
Oh, I don't.
To her office, you know? I mean, y'all stay pretty busy anyway, don't you? Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, to take on something else like this. That that's my deal is. This is going to be a big deal.
It is a lot.
Yeah. And ask them to, ask that office to.
I just like hearsay.
Let's table it.
Have a conversation.
Okay, let's court to discuss and consider surplus text stop materials for twenty twenty-two. All right, so I talked to Carrie. They have millings, they have flex space. LRA, bleed patches, aggregate, and guardrail posts. They have a project that they've started on eighty-four. They're going to store all the millings at eighty-four and FM six. Where there's very little travel involved. We don't have to go outside of Curry County for millings. I I just have one request. How much was the total on that? It's seventeen thousand. I'd like to have five hundred dollars of that for the posts. There's two hundred and seventy posts or five hundred dollars, and I'd like to use that for improvements at the the bike trail out there.
Posts being the guardrail?
Guardrail posts, yeah, unless y'all have a use for them, but I would, I'd like to see us use them out.
We did have a ton of them.
You got a car, I'm okay. I was thinking we did, yeah.
I think we do have a lot of them. We don't.
I don't, really.
We just took them because they had them at Sweetwater and they weren't going to charge anything for them. And so we went and picked them up. And they loaded them up for us.
Put lots of them to use up there, didn't we, Larry? Sure.
Well, you like obstacle course?
Yeah, yeah. So. They've already started on bike trails out there, but there are some areas that they're going to continue working on that. I'm applying for a grant this year or in February next year. For out there, so the more prepared we can be and the less we have to get, then.
I was just asking, being smart.
Surely not.
Not not necessarily an obstacle course, but more for the trails.
Okay. Okay.
Well, I'll find out how many we have.
Okay.
Do you have all of them?
Okay.
We can load them up and break them to wherever you want to stack them.
I bet as much area as we have out there, we could use those.
And to me, it just depends on what they want for them. Usually that surplus that we give for free, because we need all the millions that we can get.
Sure.
I mean, we've got roads that need to be bad, and that's where they charge us so much for, and we we don't really ever get enough. And so just depends on what they want for them and how much of that seventeen thousand they want to take, because it don't take very long to eat up seventeen thousand.
Five hundred dollars.
Wow.
Five hundred, how much?
Two hundred and seventy.
Two. Is there physical years? September, September, October, October?
I don't know.
That is their physical year, because otherwise, how do they know how many truck, oh, we permits are going to come in for the first year? I mean, they gave you a, I've never seen them give us a number prior to the end of the year going into the next year, so they must have a. Well. They, there's no way they can figure out how many, I don't know, wait, permits are going to be, because that's what we get. We get money in lieu of, or our surplus in lieu of.
Yeah, material.
Truck, oh, we truck permits, but.
Yeah, that was the other thing. You could get the seventeen thousand. Or.
We can't get the money. They never have given us the cash. They go and take it. Millings, the millings are good.
Why don't you see how many posts you got?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then.
See how far, how far, do you have any idea?
They'll be using them, laying them for rumble strips and stuff, so they'll take what they can get to. It's their track.
Right, there's up to five miles right now. We're hoping to get at least ten miles.
After you're. So this is out of there.
Well, we can make your rumble board road. And and we don't, I mean, this is something that they would allow us to have in twenty twenty-one. They'll let us have it.
Right, too, yeah.
They'll let, we can't have it until twenty twenty-two.
I'm not, it's the allocation for twenty twenty-two. I don't know exactly when that starts. I'd have to ask her.
Okay.
We just got our twenty twenty-one allocation. She said she went behind on that one, and this is the twenty twenty-two allocation.
Okay. Let me see how many we got. How many of that? More you you actually do need.
Do you have any used telephone poles up there?
Yes.
I will donate some personally.
I've got tons of them.
And I will load them for you.
Yes, okay, haul them to you.
Yeah, yeah, that, yes, that would be great.
We're screwed, cut them out. We don't need them cut up. I don't believe we need them cut up, do we?
Can we store them out there on the.
Yes. I think there's an area that just got cleaned up.
I think so, too.
Me too.
Get them out of our way.
All right, so what do you want to do?
Hey, you little rumble boy. They're probably laying, like a rumble strip, they're probably laying down and covering with dirt.
Oh, yeah.
And that they, they're talking about making bridges, all kinds of stuff.
Oh, yeah. I think we need the millings about as much as anything, don't you?
Oh, we always take them if they've got, we'll take them every time.
I'm willing to compromise. Y'all give us those telephone poles.
Oh, wait, you got, I'll leave that alone in in your post, just to stake them.
Y'all just take that as five hundred.
We can be there with them today.
Well, I can't be there today with them.
Bring them tomorrow when it's raining.
Okay. You will have a place for us to put them, well, if you're going to the library tomorrow, is that right?
No, hopefully, we're going to do that today. Before it starts raining. But.
Okay, I thought it was.
At one thirty today.
Oh, my gosh.
If we get it done, we're not going to need your guys. Nobody wants your guys.
Well, there you go, Ted.
I guess we need to keep working on roads.
But I I I'm going to call in Ted this afternoon. If we get them hauled, we'll call everybody off, so. But if everything falls apart, we may be in there in the rain.
Could be raining this afternoon.
It could be.
All right, so what do you want to do on the surplus text stop materials?
Millings.
Milling?
A motion?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. I didn't know, I don't remember doing this, but that's great. We'll take the millings and if we, I guess if we need to, we can get your posts in there.
Nah, don't worry about it.
You think?
If you're willing to do the telephone poles and the posts you have.
I'm willing.
That should, that should take care of us for a while.
They're out there right now.
Okay.
We'll get them to you as soon as you want.
All right, I'm on favor.
You sure you have a truck to cut my lawn?
We'll figure something out. We don't need them right this minute, but we'll figure something out. Uh, court to consider approval of line item transfers? How do you miss me?
Y'all be nice, she's nervous.
Yeah. You do a great job. We're not worried about it.
Okay, I have two line items. Um, the first one is from the county clerk. And it was right where they're going from. And from four oh three forty fourteen, two hundred dollars into four oh three forty two seventeen for several lines, and it's just to adjust your lines. The second one is from the house collector, and it is from Carabon's and Nurgery line of a thousand dollars into postage and training. Eight hundred and forty-five in postage and eight fifty-five in training, and it's to cover the postage due to postage increase and for school.
I make a motion, we approve the line item transfers.
Oh, in favor? All right, budget amendments?
Budget amendments, there is two. One from the sheriff's office, um, for one by quarter, two thousand minutes, and it's a budget line to set correct for contract.
The other ones are sure. Care system.
I didn't have that one on the side.
Oh, wait, no, that's a line item transfer, sorry.
I just hope that I didn't.
That's good, thank you.
I did, on my side. And you get the sheriff's office? You have that one?
The budget amendment, or you just did the budget amendment? You mean the line item transfer?
I got one on my side. I do have a line item on my side.
Okay, so we're not doing that one?
Not yet.
Okay. Very good.
Okay, I'll be over to you next, let's do that.
Uh, we need to vote on budget amendment.
Make motion to approve budget amendment.
All in favor? Okay, now we do it.
Okay, the house variable is maybe one million, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars, ninety-eight, twelve.
Make motion to pay the bills.
Second.
All in favor?
Should we give her a hand?
Yes, let's do it. Now Angela's going to say, well, y'all never gave me a hand. And come think of it, I never got a hand either. When I was the auditor.
You can take part of that for.
Oh, okay.
We're losing.
You've been, been, been a long time, so.
Y'all didn't feel the need, okay, I understand.
All right, we will go into executive session. To discuss.
Ten fifty-one.
Pursuant to section five D one point zero seven two.
Ten fifty-one. And that is all, so.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate you all being here today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie.
Have a good day.
You too. Thank you, Tommy.
Before you go home, go grab a coffee.